Good evening, we're going to go ahead and get started today on this meeting. Cheryl, if you have a roll call, please.
Mayor Gill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dukes, Councilmember Buckland, Councilmember Mann.
Kind of here.
Councilmember Starkey.
I'm here more than Councilmember Mann.
We have the invocation. Councilmember Dukes or Vice Mayor is the one that gives the invocation, so today we're going to ask Mr. Darren Gill to do that for us, led by the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Starkey. Mr. Gill.
While we ask that we begin this council meeting by guidance for proof things that's up to a guiding direction to our city, we're a city that we live in, and all areas we have, grateful for an opportunity to have to have public meetings too. That's the city, and say the same for me.
Best flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up first is a proclamation for the retirement of Brad Howell. Brad, if you can come and join us up here.
I pulled my back out two weeks ago, 17 days ago.
Make a note that the Vice Mayor has joined us. Yes, late?
Late, yes.
Brad, this is a proclamation on behalf of the City Council to you. I'm going to let you hold that while I read out some of your accomplishments. Congratulations to Brad Howell, Public Works Maintenance Worker Three, on his retirement from the City of Yuba City with 31 years of dedicated service. Yes, wow. Brad began his city career in public works, maintaining city streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, signs, markings, and storm drainage systems. He has always been willing to respond to any emergency situation, especially during the high water concerns in May of 1986 and January of 1997. We sure hope we have some of those high water concerns again now, right? Yes. Brad has always been a conscientious and a dedicated employee of the Yuba City Public Works Department, and has earned the respect of his fellow employees, and will sincerely be missed. Now therefore be it resolved that I Cash Gill, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Brad's 31 years of outstanding and loyal service to the City of Yuba City, and sincerely urge all residents of Yuba City to join with me in recognizing Mr. Brad Howell for all of his contributions to the Yuba City community, done on the 7th day of January 2014, at the City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California. Congratulations, and let me say thank you very much on behalf of the entire Council, the residents of the City of Yuba City, for all that you've done for our community. I'd like to say a few words.
I just want to say thank you to the city for giving me the opportunity almost 34 years ago when I started part-time. It's been basically the second family to me, and all of my coworkers, and it's truly been an honor to work with everybody, and I look forward to my next chapter in my life. I've got four grandkids, and I want to say a special thank you to my wife of 35 years for putting up with me for 34 years here. Listening to my war stories and everything else when I come home on good days, some days, but anyway, thank you, everybody.
Okay, next up on the agenda is public hearing, item number three, tax-exempt bond financing for Kingsbury Real Estate Holdings. Oh, I missed, ah, kind of missing right over that. Item number two, presentations from the Friends of Parks and Recreation Foundation.
Good evening, sirs and fellow citizens of Yuba City. I'm Sharon Cornell. I had the pleasure of being the president of the Yuba City Parks and Rec, Friends of Yuba City Parks and Rec Foundation Board of Directors. Lots of times when I see that, people look at me like, what? So very briefly, we have a PowerPoint presentation. We're basically known as the Friends Foundation. And our goal, which you can read up here, is to enhance parks and recreational programs. We're a volunteer organization and raise funds to do so throughout Yuba City, especially for disadvantaged youth and seniors, by the way. Our board members, I'm going to ask to stand, those of you that are here, Michelle Blake, will you stand, please? And John, thank you, Michelle, and John Cassidy, and Judy Joel, Karen Carticelli, a distant relative of mine, Abby Sessina, June Bone, and did I miss anybody? I don't think so. Oh, shoot.
My boss.
And, oh my gosh, Brad McIntyre, who's a backbone of the Foundation Board. A lot of the folks' names that you saw there have been involved with the Foundation for some time, and it has been in place since the late 90s, I think, collecting money, doing fundraisers, in order to support the Parks and Rec programs here in Yuba City. Every year, we give scholarship fund money to kids that are disadvantaged, and seniors that may be disadvantaged, so they can participate in programs, including the swim programs at Gauche Aquatic Park, but all the other recreational programs are available, and there are quite a few of them in this community, some that people may not even be aware of. But if you call Parks and Rec, they'll be happy to let you know, and even look at the pamphlet that we all get, the booklet we get, once a year, that talks about all the programs that are available. Some of the projects that we've been involved in, one-time capital investment in enhancing the dog park, the Gauche Aqua Climb Facility, that's at Gauche Swim Park, the windbreak at the tennis courts, hold on a second here. The ideas for programs and projects come from the community, so anyone could get in touch with one of the board members or Brad and say, gee, I have an idea about something that might be really good, that would enhance the parks, that would be a one-time capital investment, or a small investment over time, because we're not a very large foundation, but we do have money to help with projects, for example, like the dog park. In looking at providing programs for disadvantaged youth, the Gauche Park has installed playground equipment that is accessible for kids that are handicapped or in wheelchairs, and we're planning on doing more of that, too, at some of the other park facilities. Our fundraising efforts include coffee and crooners, which was an event that we held, a fundraiser that was a brunch with, okay, I'm forgetting the word, strolling crooners, who sang songs from Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin, and who am I forgetting, and Judy Garland. That was a lovely event that was held at the City Cafe. Ongoing during the summer are the Concerts in the Park that the Foundation sponsors. Different organizations come in and provide, volunteer to provide the meal, but we organize the event with assistance of the folks at Gauche, especially Abby, and provide a place, a venue, for people to come. Have you all been to the Concerts in the Park at Gauche? I mean, we get quite a huge turnout, very often, depending on what the group is, but it's a lot of fun. It's a family event. Some of the plans we have in place right now are doing a partnership run, partnering with people like United Way, in order to reach out to the community and provide healthy options for activities, and also do some fundraising for ourselves. The goals for 2014, as you see up there, partnering again with the Bicycle Advisory Committee to do like a poker run, only with bicycles. There's no other way to say this, but we've had a request by someone who shall remain nameless, Karen Carticelli, that we reinstitute the poop bags at the various parks, the pet waste disposal implementation plan, if you will. And again, our focus is on disadvantaged youth, low-income seniors, and then enhancing the quality of life for the people of Yuba City, California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sharon, and thank you to the entire board there for everything that you do, and I really appreciate you guys taking time and sharing with us and the audience at home as far as how to be involved, and exactly what the Friends of Park and Recreation do, because a lot of people don't know. And so, you're more than welcome to stay for item number three? I take that that's a no?
John, it's great to see you again.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on the item is a public hearing, item number three is tax-exempt bond financing for Kingsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC. Mr. Darren Gill.
Good evening, Mayor Gill and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening for the TEFRA hearing for Kingsbury. So let me talk a little bit about Kingsbury, and then I'll talk about the purpose of this item. So first, Kingsbury is a Philadelphia headquartered manufacturer. In 2006, they opened up their Western service, I think they called their North America Western Service Facility, bearing service facility. And what they are, is they're, I think, a hundred-plus-year, family-owned company. They originally were started as a bearing manufacturer, and they are, the best way someone explained it to me is like the Kleenex of Kleenex, well, they're the bearings of bearings, right? So when you say Kingsbury, people know that that's the bearing company. And they obviously service many of the hydroelectric plants on the West Coast, and other key bearing-related type of equipment, and they do that here in Yuba City. Like I said, they've been here since 2006. It is a high-skilled position, highly technical, and it's amazing what they do, and they've quietly been located here in our city, down off of Burns Drive, sharing space with Fletcher's Plumbing. And one of the important parts of their process is temperature control, and currently they're in, really in an unconditioned space. And it was a temporary space that they thought maybe 10 years down the road, they'd be able to build their own facility, and now just, maybe not for the employees, but for us, a short six years later, they're looking at investing into a significant piece of property, and build a new facility here in Yuba City. A groundbreaking will happen tomorrow at 1:00, and starting at 11:30, you can actually take a tour of their facilities. It's amazing what they do. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested to please attend that event. As relates specifically to this item, is, TEFRA stands for the Tax Equity and Physical Responsibility Act, which was passed by the federal government in 1986. It allows, under, you know, a variety of qualifications, it allows nonprofits and for-profit businesses to sell tax-exempt bonds. Part of that process is you have to go through a public hearing. This is that public hearing for their opportunity to actually sell these tax-exempt bonds. They are doing it through a group called ABAG Financial Authority for Nonprofit Corporations. It's not just for nonprofit corporations, it's also for-profit, but ABAG is a nonprofit corporation. As a part of the hearing this evening, and part of the attached resolutions, the City of Yuba City would join ABAG, and there's no financial responsibility as relates to the city for this. It does not affect our bond rating, doesn't, the city is not borrowing money. Kingsbury is the one here that will actually be borrowing money through a tax-exempt bond issuance. So this evening, we'd ask that you open up a public hearing to hear any public comments. We do have two members, both Lloyd and Dave, from Kingsbury, that are here to answer any questions that you might have about their facility. And then as part of the adoption tonight, the resolutions, one would be joining as an associate member of ABAG, and also, it's a resolution stating that you've had this public hearing, that there's been no objections, or no significant objections, where the council doesn't think it should move forward, or that we wouldn't want that in this community, and Kingsbury would then be able to issue tax-exempt bonds through ABAG. So at this time, I'd ask that you open up the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Darren Gill before I open it up? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and open this meeting portion up to the public hearing, and I've got a speaker card from Ms. Pat Miller.
Good evening, gentlemen. I think it's great that the Kingsbury folks are building in the community and providing jobs. My question is, who is ABAG?
Darren can answer that.
So ABAG, there's, ABAG is an association of Bay Area governments out of the Bay Area. They are one of a variety of different bond issuing authorities. The City Council has in the past issued, had similar type hearings like this, TEFRA, most recently Goodwill. They use the CMFA, the California Municipal Finance Authority, which is an offshoot of, through our membership of the League of California Cities, we're a member of CMFA. So this is a nonprofit organization associated with ABAG, that was set up for issuing bonds for this type of project.
And correct, and the other answer to that is, this is not the first one we've done it, like you said, with Goodwill, we've done it with Sutter Health, to issue similar types as well.
Okay. We are not joining ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, we're joining their financial end?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're not becoming a member of ABAG?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Let me clarify that for everybody who's listening. Actually, the name of the organization is ABAG Finance Authority for Nonprofit Corporations, not the Council of Governments.
We told Darren it was better than joining DBAG. Okay. Anybody else from the public that wishes to comment on this item? Okay? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for their recommendation.
I recommend approval of the item, including items one and two of this.
Okay, I've got a motion by our Vice Mayor Dukes.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Mann. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up is public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comments taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representative to express the opinion of the group. Item number four, members of the public submitting written requests. At least 24 hours prior to the meeting, will be normally allotted five minutes to speak. Cheryl, did we receive any written requests?
No written requests.
Perfect. Item number five, interested of interest to citizens. Members of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anybody in the audience who wishes to come and speak on this item, or any other items? Okay. Next up is a consent calendar. All matters listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Is there anything on the consent calendar that the council members wish to remove or discuss separately? Okay? If not, anybody from the public?
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, motion carries. General items. Item number nine has been pulled from the agenda, which will be discussed at staff level, and with other recommendations, and possibly brought back. So we move on to item number 10, which is Helen Avenue Drainage Improvement District or Project Plans and Specifications.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Omar Vae, I'm Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department, and the item on the agenda today is Helen Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. The action tonight is adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications, and authorizing Public Works to bid the project. The project location is on Helen Avenue, as seen on Exhibit A. It's between South Barrett Road and Clark Avenue, just south of Franklin Road. The purpose of the project is to establish a drainage facilities for Helen Avenue. As you know, Helen Avenue was annexed into the city a while back, and it was part of the county, so there were no drainage facilities present. Back in 1999, they extended a drainage inlet from Clark Road about 100 feet in, to try and mitigate some problems they were seeing there. It didn't resolve the issue. What we're seeing, both by observation and by resident complaints or concerns, is that even in a moderate storm event, the existing facility isn't sufficient to drain off the stormwater, so it puddles up in the right-of-ways, just on the shoulders of the roads, and in a significant storm event, it puddles up into residents' driveways, and up to, some of them even up to their front porch. So I myself have gone and observed after a rain event, and it is a concern, an area of concern, and as well as all the residents. As a result, Public Works proposes to extend the facilities near Clark Road, all the way through, westward, all the way to South Barrett. The proposed design is to put storm drains, inlets on both sides of the road, about 500 feet apart. That should help mitigate some of this runoff. The engineer's estimate is $248,000, and that would include construction cost, project engineering, and construction inspection. $248,000 has been budgeted in the Drainage Improvements account, and it'll be funded through the Roads Fund. With approval tonight, the tentative schedule would be to send this item out to bid, this project out to bid in January, have it awarded by February, start construction in March, and have completion by May of this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at all?
To the mayor?
Yes.
This does not include curb, gutter, and all that type of stuff?
No, it does not.
If, at some point in time down the road, curb gutters and so forth are going to be incorporated into that area, is this going to be able to have to be totally redone, or is this going to be able to work with?
We should be able to work with it. Getting the storm drain lines installed is the main part of it. We can always adjust and tie in as needed in the future.
Thank you. Any other questions for Omar? Okay, if not, what's the pleasure of the council?
Move the recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Omar.
Thank you.
Next up is the number 11, Establishment of the Economic Development Work Plan Advisory Committee, Mr. Darren Gill.
Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight's an exciting night. What we just approved with Kingsbury is huge. It's business retention and expansion of an employer that pays higher than median income, and they're going from 20 employees to 40 employees. And that's significant, and not only that, it's outside money coming and investing into our community, using local contractors like Hilbers. And part of it was, was through the city's economic development efforts. We built a relationship with them, they were looking for properties, we helped them with that process, and they came to us a week before Thanksgiving, so a week before the city was going to be closed for a full week due to the furloughs. And basically tomorrow, well, they've already started grading, and tomorrow they're pulling the permit on a new 33,000-square-foot building. That's the work of city staff, working closely with a key business partner, to see a project move through the process, so they can open up a facility in September. To think that a project came in the door with plans, and really not until the first week of December, we've been able to push that through so we can meet their timeline, is a key part of the city's economic development work plan, and I would say it's part of the success of the city's work plan. So tonight, let me just step back and talk a little bit about the past. In 2008, the council created an Economic Development Advisory Committee. That group was 25 key business and community members. They met about three or four times, they had meetings that Audrey Chavon helped organize, and they successfully put together a plan. And within a short, I think less than six months, the council established a committee, had workshops, and adopted a work plan. And soon thereafter, the council established an Economic Development Commission. Tonight with us this evening is our Chairman of our Economic Development Commission, Greg Heckman. We're very lucky to have a strong Economic Development Commission this entire time, that's represented a variety of business sectors. As it relates to some of the success, well, actually, let me go back. The three goals of the work plan have not changed since 2008, but the subset, the priorities within the goals, and the short-term and long-term, have kind of, have evolved over time, because we've had successes, and we've moved on to the next project. The three goals were grow opportunities for well-paying jobs, create a positive and inspiring self-image, and then the third one was enhance quality of life through collaborative and integrative actions, which is a little bit more difficult to define, but we've set priorities for it and implemented that. A few of the successes of the work plan, like I mentioned today, having the direct connection with our local businesses, to understand what they need, at what time, to make sure that our businesses will stay here. The city now has a business retention and expansion program. We often do business walks, we have an adopted business program that was successfully implemented. And as relates to this, and that's really looking at trying to grow better jobs here in our community. We updated the city branding with an updated logo, a crate label, and promotional materials to key businesses outside of our region. There's two parts of economic development. There's economic development right here in our community, which we will see the most improvements of, is helping our local businesses grow, and making sure that they don't leave. And then two is the promotion to try to attract new businesses into our community. One of the key things of that work plan was seeing a Yuba City campus of Yuba College here, right here in our community. And the City Council was key in seeing that approval move forward with the expansion of the sphere of influence, and adopting all the plans that they needed to build that facility. There's a direct correlation between your education levels in your community, and the proximity to a junior college. And there's no doubt, we've already seen higher increases, talking with the college, of people from Yuba City actually attending that campus there. We've also seen a significant increase in Live Oak and Gridley, of people who are traveling to this new campus here in our community, and hopefully, it's, not hopefully, it is the first step before you can actually see a four-year degree in your community, and Yuba College is trying to work with a variety of different groups to see a four-year degree being able to be completed at that facility here in Yuba City. So as it relates to an update, success has occurred. We saw it, like I said, we saw it again this evening, and now it's time to reengage the business community outside of our Economic Development Commissioners. They will participate as part of this program, and they requested that we update our plan comprehensively. On a yearly basis, we've brought that, brought, the Economic Development Commission has recommended changes, and you have adopted that. We would ask that the council once again establish a Work Plan Advisory Committee of 20, 25 community members to participate in this process. We've asked each one of the council members and Economic Development Commissioners to provide at least two names to me, so that we can, you know, put this group together. Once all those are received, the mayor and the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Mr. Heckman, will get together and finalize that list. I'll make personal phone calls to them, and then we'll send out letters inviting them to our first meeting. We plan on, once again, using Chavon Concepts and Audrey Taylor. She was a proven asset that helped move this project along very quickly, to move these meetings along. We plan on having three meetings in February and March. We'd hope for the Economic Development Commission to take the recommendations out of those committees, adopt a draft in May, and bring it back to the City Council in June. This is an aggressive schedule, but we believe that economic development is key, and we believe that re-engaging the business community, and getting them excited about what the city's doing as relates to economic development, and we will only be successful if our businesses are successful. And we need them, you know, helping us implement this plan, which they have done, through our economic development commission and through some of those former members of the advisory panel. Also, it was brought up that, obviously, it would be great for all the council members to attend, but there might be appropriate to have a couple of council members assigned to this advisory committee. They will be open meetings for everyone to attend, and we will invite the whole public. But, of course, we want to make sure that we have this key group of business and community leaders to help direct and see the updated 2014 economic development work plan adopted. So, this evening, the recommendation is to establish a work plan advisory committee. There is no need for additional allocation of funds. However, the contract with Audrey Chavon would be -- or the expenses total to see this would probably be about $25,000, and that could be paid for out of the existing 2013, 2014 physical budget that the council's already adopted. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Gale? You've done a fantastic job. You've answered all their questions that they have absolutely no questions for you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I would be honored to approve the recommendation.
I'll second that. Got a motion and second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is business from the city council, number 12, appointments of the city of Yuba City Boards and Commissions. The vice mayor and I met back on December 19th, and we interviewed the candidates that had applied for planning commission, senior commission, and economic development commission. Our recommendations to the council is that for planning commission, appoint Preet Deedball for the term of, from now, from 1/14 to expiring on 12/31/17. For the senior commission, we've got Pam Appleby, George Robinson, and Tana Thomas. Again, their terms would expire on 12/31/17. And for economic development, for an alternate position is to appoint Christine Ivory. She works for PCP, but also is a representative of the Yuba City Farm Bureau. That is the vice mayor's and my recommendations to the council. We'd be glad to answer any questions. Okay, if not?
I'll move to approve.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is item number 13, city council reports. Councilmember Buckland, he's in Hawaii. He keeps sending these beautiful pictures, so I'm sure he'll have a report to come back to us. Councilmember Maun?
I wish I was in Hawaii or felt like I was in a hospital. I don't have a whole lot to report. I'm finally over my flu. I had the flu shot. Didn't help. Too late now. Pulled my back muscle down with a bad back. Fortunately, it was during the slow time, so there weren't a lot of meetings in the last couple of weeks.
That's what happens when you twerk.
Maybe it's because, I don't know, we slowed down and -- but whatever. Happy New Year, everybody. It's our first meeting since the New Year. Probably the first time I got out since the New Year, so that's how I got to report.
Wonderful. Councilmember Starkey?
It's very difficult to follow that inspiring and exciting report. However, I had the opportunity on the 19th of December to attend the Yuba City Transit Meeting along with the Regional Waste Management Board meetings, and I have to tell you that those two organizations are doing marvelously well.
We could go to that.
You were there.
Yeah.
Yeah, before your --
Oh, I remember.
Before your injury. So, anyway, I just want to report they're doing marvelously well, and we're the stewards of these organizations. So, thank you very much, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Vice Mayor Dukes?
Really have nothing to report, other than the reason I was late tonight. I was meeting with the executive director of the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency and discussing issues of that agency. So, apologize for being late.
That's all right. We'll just deduct it out of your high-paying salary. I don't have anything to report either. We've got a lot of meetings tomorrow, Thursday, and next week. Sutter Buttes Flood Agency, that usually meets today or tomorrow, was pushed back to next week. So, we'll have some stuff there. The other exciting, Gilcizer Committee was postponed, counseled, so that's the other excitement. But other than that, Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you very much. Meetings adjourned.